Commissioner Arnold from the First District will give our invocation tonight.
That is right. Lord, we thank you for this and another day, Lord, to get an opportunity to come together on this beautiful day to discuss the county's business. Lord, we ask you to guide us and help us to make decisions if you think will be best for our county and its citizens. Lord, we ask that you be with those who are sick and afflicted, that you reach down and heal their bodies, because I will. Be with all those, Lord, who need your special needs, prayers, all this, that you ask in precious name.
Amen.
Commissioner Holland, would you leave the place?
I plead the leave, the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any injustice or fraud.
Next on the agenda is Rowcall. If you're present, please push your tablet. Dayton Stokes, Rocky Preston, Erin Burr. We have fifteen present, three absent. We're going to call it. Number one on the agenda is the approval of our agenda. Need a motion and a second, please. I will motion by Commissioner Nunry and a second by Commissioner King. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The agenda has been approved. Number two is the citizens' forum. Ms. Maureen, would you come forward, please?
Hello. I'm Maureen Cairns, and I am a pharmacist at the Walmart in Camden. And I know that there's an opening at the Animal Shelter Board, and I don't know exactly how that seat is going to be filled, but I know that I spend at least three to four days a week at the shelter for a minimum of three hours. And when I'm not at the shelter, I am updating Facebook, I'm posting animals. I'm sure a lot of you have been quite annoyed by my post on HipCam, then constantly talking about the animals and who needs a home right away. So I feel like my passion for the animals shows through, and I think that that's the kind of person that should be on the board, because I'm there, I see what needs to be done, I see what's lacking, I see what's wonderful. I've made a difference there, and my heart and my passion is in that shelter. So I feel like I've already made a big difference, and I want to keep making a difference. And I feel like it should be checks and balances, that you have people who are looking out over the situation and able to see when there are problems, what can be fixed. And I feel like I would be someone who's in that perfect position to do that. And that's all. Thank you. And thank you for everything that you do at the Animal Clinic.
Number three is the commissioner's forum. Do we have a commissioner that would like to speak? Number four is the county mayor. He has a few things that he would like to talk about.
Yeah, I'd like for Cindy and Tammy to come up, if you don't mind. We've had lots of complaints across the county about different people's neighbors with dogs and trash and not having septic tanks. I know, Mr. Arnold, you know all about that. We've worked together to try to fix a lot of it. But these ladies, I've been going and seeing them and talking to them about their neighbors, and they just wanted to address you for a minute, just to see what kind of help y'all might could help me with.
I'm Cindy, Sunset Drive.
This is Tammy.
Ron Sundown.
And we do have a lot of problem with trash, pure trash, human trash. They just don't take it to the dump. They, there's, on one particular area, there's like nine RVs, maybe three, four of them lived in. There's no septic, there's no electric, no water here, say. But it's quite obvious that something's going on. The place is getting inundated with mice as well as rats. We do have, we have pictures. And it's not just Sunset. It's right there on Birdsong, the Morgan Creek area. And we all are citizens of that area. I'm brought there to live there. And my value of property has gone down tremendously. And then, of course, I get a letter saying my taxes have been as high. Okay, I get it. But we need to do something about the trash. That's all it is, too. It's just, need to do something about the trash.
That's what I'm here to say to y'all, so. There's hundreds of trash bags piled up on one piece of property. Not, from what I understand, there's a law against that. Five to 10 pounds or something like that, sometimes.
It's a most damaging.
It's a health thing. At this point, it's a health thing. More than, oh, we don't want to look at it. It's a health problem. It's an environmental thing. We have rats. My daughter's killed rats. Nobody wants that. Taxes did just go up. We love Benton County. We haven't been here that long. We want to stay here, own property here. We love it. But it needs somebody. My daughter spoke with the mayor on the phone. Last year, we had county commissioners out, people from the environmental. No one's done anything about any of it. If anything, it's gotten worse. We're scared of our wells. We're also the watershed to the river. That's TWRA, environmental. Nothing's supposed to go in the river. I don't know. I don't understand why. No one's come out there to clean it up, or everybody tells us, oh, when you go tonight, it's going to be a waste of your time, because Benton County's not going to do anything about it. I don't know. I don't know if that's true or not, but why not? Why can't there something be done about it? I can't help how people live. I understand there's, I'm not saying to change how you live. You can live any way you want to, but you can get a burn barrel and burn your trash, get a permit. Like, there's no reason for anybody to live like that, no matter where you live.
No. And we have one gentleman that lives kind of down in Pollard, and that trash that is thrown out of, the bags of trash, it's literally going down the hill into his waterway. It's affecting his well. When we have to buy water because of that, that's, it's just unacceptable. It's just unacceptable.
We're just pleading for somebody to help. Somebody at least come out there. I mean, somebody evidently went around to raise taxes, right? Don't you go and review properties before you raise the price? I don't know. If that's the case, why didn't somebody notice that? If it's against the rules of discounting. Like I said, we're just asking for to be safe environmentally. Like, we're not asking you to make them not live in their grandparents' old home, or, like I said, I don't care how you live, just make it safe.
It doesn't matter if you have to haul your water.
Exactly. Like, I don't even care about any of that. Just.
Pick up your trash. Pick up your trash.
Just make it safe. The dogs and animals, spread it. You know, I mean, it's probably not the greatest area, but one day it could be.
And there's just way too many dogs out there.
Wow.
On that one property, way too many. I had to get a big dog just to keep the dogs out of my property, and I still am getting stuff stolen off my property. So, I mean, it's gotten bad for me in the two and a half years I've been here. And I'm ready to put my place on the market, because I can't get any help.
We've been here two years, but we want to stay forever. But we would sure love to see you guys cleaning up for us. That would be.
It would be awesome.
Absolutely.
I would love to know that the next people coming into my house would have an awesome, awesome place to live. I have awesome neighbors that are there for me, and our health has not been good. And so they have really taken good care of me. But I'm telling you, the other part is not so safe. So I shouldn't have to live in a fortress, with cameras and alarms and all that stuff. I shouldn't have to live like that. I came up here to live my life, and I'm selling out because I don't feel it's safe.
Do any commissioners want to ask any questions? Out of First District?
Sheriff, I'm familiar with what they're talking about. One of you ladies sent me pictures. Make sure we're going to send them. Somebody sent me a picture, but I need where it's at, right down there. We used to be the old guard down there.
Yes, sir.
And I was down there not long ago. It is terrible. It's, you know, it's bags of household garbage piled up.
Hundreds.
And I know the county has used an ordinance, the county, big county has an old county license on it, okay? So, but there is an ordinance out there that the county has used in the past to clean up areas that was called a health hazard. And I think we spoke to the mayor about that once, and, but it's, that's probably the only way that we could probably make a way to get that cleaned up, is using that state ordinance in order to have a health hazard. We go in there and ask them, send them letters, ask them to clean it up. If a dog cleaned up, the county would have to go in there and clean it up, charge that deal for their taxes, in order to do that. I mean, it is horrendous.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
A year or so ago, being the commissioner, while I was in state, we rolled around the county up in there.
Yes, sir. I was with a few of you gentlemen, and y'all done that.
It's a mess. The septic issue, I talked to the legislative committees, I talked to the people, Brown, Ward, and Jackson. What happens a lot of times is people get their permit for the septic system, get electricity on, but the state never comes back and sees if that was ever put in. And it's not the legislative job. People back there, have to drive, fund. And I've talked to some legislators, I've talked to the state about things. I've tried to come up with a way that we could have somehow a county ordinance. Unfortunately, counties can't have ordinances unless it's passed legislature as a special act.
Privatized.
Private act for us. So we do have that problem. Most campers, they're going, will put a camp hook up, and they don't have to put a septic in. Also, both themselves did things.
Right.
They are to that tank, and we'll, we'll flood them, they're running out of heat.
Right.
So there is a problem up there. Obviously, I've got a way to do it. Unfortunately, our hands may have to serve them out, because of the locks. But that one way that maybe clean it up with that, for a health hazard, about all that yard, it, this room wouldn't hold it up.
No.
It's terrible. We kept thinking, well, they've tried to clean it up a little bit, just say toward the roadway, because they've evidently seen someone photographing, you know, whatever.
That was my one when we left. It was still knee-high behind that.
Yeah, and Birdsong Road, you get the same problem.
Yes, it is.
But again, you know.
But you have those that work at their property and try to keep it clean and do the things they should, and then that just really.
It's discouraging.
Yeah.
But we don't have county license on it.
Well, I understand that.
And they developed it. Some of those locks, I mean, restrictions on, but nobody ever enforced them. So, I mean, you go so far back as you can, pick up those enforcements, you know, at that lock. But some of those locks up in there did have something. Then they started, there's a thing with Facebook, where the person sticks into the box of locks, or if you live the camper, you live the bus, you live the container, you dream it, you can do it. And that's what they're bringing in, you know.
No restrictions.
And that's what they're doing with some of those locks.
But there are state laws.
That's exactly what I was going to say. Or the state laws not protect you guys in Benton County as far as like, because there are laws against that.
There are laws against running your septic out that way.
Little.
But.
And the trash, I believe.
And we come up to, probably unfortunately, the sheriff had to write somebody a ticket. They sleep on something out, you know.
Well, up to 10 pounds, up to 10 pounds of trash.
It's not a terrible, terrible place. I'll walk the town out if you got it. Big city's got problems. I'm not going to interrupt, but while we run out of time, the board, and not just mayor, but where this mayor, he put out the, out the ordinance, and had so he made it cleaned up. We went and ordered them with that. And they went down there to clean it up, because they refused to. They went out there to clean the place up. They called the mayor, and the mayor said, well, we'll just let it go for now. It's still just like one, and that's been at least five years.
It wasn't me.
Yeah, that seems to be the issue. Like I said, everybody can say, well, if you're going to Benton County, you're wasting your time. But, I mean, I don't know how that could be. Like, we do, too.
I love this. We need to.
Listen, I appreciate you all coming, because I want, I want everyone to be aware of what's going on. I've been down there a few times. I know I've had Rudy Collins with the State Health Department to come and look at it, and we're going to do what we can.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to give Kim Plunk a minute, if you don't mind.
Good evening, everyone. I've never spoken at one of these. I'm a tad nervous, but I'm going to make it as short and sweet as I can. My name is Kim Plunk. I've been a resident of Benton County for approximately 24 years. I have a coworker, and she and I both work full-time currently at our homes with Health and Human Services. We are federal employees. Our employer is now asking us to find a workspace that is government-related building. So we have approached everybody from city, local, state, county. We've knocked on every door we can think of. I called the mayor and spoke to him a few weeks ago. He said he would do what he can to help us find a space. He did not make a promise that he would give us a space. He never committed to that. So I want to make that very clear. He simply said he would help a citizen of this county. So my understanding is, we need to be, meet with the building committee to see if that's even an option. I will be very open about this. Our employer, your federal government, which I'm very proud to work for, but they want this space at no cost. So I understand that may be a big problem, because Benton County is not into giving out free space. I said, under the table, if I needed to pay a little something, I would. But my employer will not provide that. So I am simply here to make it clear that the mayor said he would do what he could to help us. No promises, no commitments. It would have to go through the building committee. And again, he did not make a promise that he would do this.
So, so what I've talked to Ms. Plunk about, they need an office space. Got with Richard Key over here at the old Health Department. There's two offices that are not in use at all. There's two more offices that the Northwest Tennessee Transit have leased from us, and they've moved out. They've moved all their operations to Dresden. I called them. They said, yes, we would love to. They're, they're going to keep paying through this budget year, but after that, they will not. But as it is right now, the two offices that Richard has is on the wing where the state troopers were. They're not, ain't no longer there. But those offices haven't been used in like five years. I just wanted y'all to know what was going on, so when we bring this up to property next month, everybody will be on the same page. And I want Ms. Plunk to come and tell y'all what, what they would be using offices for. If there has to be an offset of a little money for the utilities that they might use, they'll probably be willing to work that out between themselves and us. But I just want y'all to have it off their mind about that, and maybe look into those two offices. Richard Key can fill you in on, on the offices. It's, it's not going to have anything to do with the front part of the building, which we have for the nurse training program, CTA, C, which one is it? CTAAS?
CTAAS.
Anyway, they're, they're still interested in keeping that whole front of the building and everything, but this wouldn't affect it. It'll have a backdoor entrance and just be two offices. But I wanted her to come tonight and talk to y'all, because I don't want to make that decision.
What department is that in? Department of Health and Human Services.
Did Elon about this?
Elon ain't willing to pay. That's why I'm here begging. No, I just.
When did you get paid?
Okay.
How much did you pay?
Two. My, my fellow employees.
Through separate offices?
Preferably. But, look, worst-case scenario, we'll sit in closet together. We don't care. We're.
Just work with one.
Two bodies with two desks. That's it.
Those offices are about 12 by 12, open.
Beggars cannot be choosers, sir, I promise you. And this, I'll be honest, we, like I said, we've knocked on every door. Health and Human Services may come back on us and say, no, it has to be a federal facility. If that's the case, I don't need to bother you with your time. But I'm, I'm laying it out here right now, just in case this works out.
They don't give one, or they don't make you drive some work?
Jackson, Tennessee.
So this is going to say y'all out.
We have possibly, possibly secured something at Springville at the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, but that's not been signed, no contract's been signed yet. That no-money thing is a big factor. So I would prefer to work in Benton County. Like I said, I work in a backroom jail cell. I don't care. I just prefer not to go to Jackson, but I'll do whatever.
Have you checked, have you checked at the army? He used to just hold us in there.
We went there. I, I went, we went there together Friday a week ago, the same day that we met Mr., no, I don't think it was the same day, but they do have open spacing. I cannot get a reply back from the person that was there that said they were willing to give us the reins, but that had to go up the chain, and no reply.
Call Jackson.
Yes, sir. Okay. At this point, I, again, I'll take any time I can get.
This will be coming up in front of property unit next month's meeting. So I just wanted everybody to be aware, and I wanted to give her ample time to speak, so that you all know what it's about.
I thank you all for your time. Any other questions before I sit down?
She is welcome.
Yes, she will. And I'm sorry, I didn't know about it last Monday. You were up in there last Monday. Thank you.
It's all good.
That's all you have. Okay. Before we move on to number five, who is the sheriff, I have a couple of letters here that I aim to read to the county commission. The first letter I'm going to read is from our Highway Department Superintendent, Mr. Buck Carter. And I really don't like reading this, but it, it is procedure that when we have an elected official that's retiring before their term is up, it has to be brought to the full commission, and we do have to confirm it to make it legal. So the letter from Buck says, Notice of Resignation from Benton County Highway Department. Honorable Mayor Mark Ward and the Commissioner of Benton County, please accept this letter of resignation from my position of Benton County Highway Department, CAO. My last day to work will be June 30th, 2025. I am resigning my position due to retirement. Signed, sincerely, Buck Carter. So we all know that Buck has done a wonderful job, and we hate to see him go. But he has made his decision, so we have to confirm that. So all that's in favor of Buck's resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to oppose? All right, that's been confirmed. The next letter is a letter from James Melton. This letter is dated April the 9th. It says, to the mayor and commissioners, please accept this as my resignation notice as your county attorney. I consider it an honor to have been chosen for this position and have enjoyed representing Benton County for the past couple of years. I sincerely hope that I have been of service in assisting you in your pursuit of the best governance of our great county. I would never intend to leave the county with unfinished business that I am currently a part of, and will continue to attend all such matters until completion unless directed otherwise. I wish all of you the best and most success. Signed, sincerely, James Melton.
Next on our agenda is number five, who is the sheriff. Sheriff, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. What I want to present to you tonight is, you should have a Zoom meeting coming up here concerning license plate readers. The city has voted to put in some here in city limits. These are real beneficial for law enforcement. What that does is it will notify us, we'll put them in particular places throughout the county. It'll notify us if anybody, a wanted subject comes in, silver alerts, amber alerts, anything that criminal, that we know, when they read that license plate, that's connected to a person, it'll let us know that vehicle, that person will come into our county. We want to put them on the ends of our county, spread them out, so that we can see that vehicle is going out. Some of these cameras will have real eye cameras on them, once it gives the license plate. Some of them will also show us the vehicle. If they pull into a truck stop, or if they pull into D.C. or wherever they might be here in county. We want to put these up on all entrances, come into our county. And it'll be very beneficial. This gentleman here is very well versed on this. It's a great idea. Also, it'll give us access to any other cameras that this company has anywhere around the country. And there's lots of. So if we see something coming down I-40, it reads out leaving the dentists, and we see that same vehicle, that is a wanted subject. And they get on into Jackson, another one picks it up, another one picks it up, and then we see it off the exit 126, 133. It'll alert us that they're in our county, that we can move on. Within 15 seconds, they'll notify our dispatch, our dispatch, before we would ever even think about, knowing anything about being in our county, we get it off. We'll notify the dentists, who can go ahead and be in route, say out warrants, give us a child that's missing, and they think they're connected to that license plate, or amber alert, anything stranger, silver alert, anything like that, we notify them. It'll help us convince them to do our job by being spread out 24/7. These cameras will click 15 seconds, dispatch, another 15 seconds, 30 seconds, we put it out for our dentists, and they're in route to that area. Armed robbery suspect, maybe out of Jackson, and takes off, comes this way, they pull in up here from 1-9, they pull in, it's 641, 641 North, 641 South, it will alert us as soon as they enter our county. It'll be very, very beneficial to us. The cost is minimal for what it is. They take here all the stories, they take here all, everything on this, all the naints, everything on these cameras. And the total cost for every year cost would run around $27,000 for what we do. But I, I think it's very important to get, I don't want to try to sell this to y'all. This county just stuff that you really, really need. Henry County does not have this at this time. I don't know if they're going to buy into it or not. I believe Cedar County does, several other counties around us do. As I said, the city. Kind of like having an officer standing there all the time, watching, only it's just a lot quicker, more efficient. So I'll let him, I'll let him explain this to you and what we're all to do. I, I want you to seriously take this into consideration on this next budget, because I believe it will help protect the people in this county more than anything else we've run up on in a long time. So if y'all would give it your attention, give it your consideration. I'm sure he's going to want you to ask questions. So ask questions, and be informed about what to do.
Awesome. Thank you, Sheriff. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Awesome. Well, good to meet you all. My name is Jordan. I'm a territory sales manager here at Flock, and I've got to work, learning about, and, you know, he referred to Benton County as the last Mayberry. I think it is not, I had it just so far. What I also know is that you guys are encountering some very specific challenges as regards to human trafficking, potentially, you know, degrade the quality of life in your county. So really wanted to, to eye level, serves customers like Benton County, and the impact that we see as a result of it. So, um, I have no idea what Flock Safety was. My wife was 41 weeks pregnant, and we had someone break into our, did I know? All I was able to tell the police officer was, hey, this was a, a black Chevy pickup truck that left my, they called me the next, granted, the, the guy that broke into your house. I was like, how the heck did that happen? And he was like, oh, we got this. Bam, later. Bam, later. Working with people like Sheriff to, to make a safer community. So I'm very bought in to this eliminating crime future together. Um, I think it's important for y'all to know is responsible. It's all 10% of all crimes across the nation. So when you think about our network having all across. It just goes to show how powerful these evidence collecting devices are. Falls, um, uh, the sheriff to ultimately, you know, do his job well. Uh, let alone, you know, we work with over 4,500 agencies in the, in the nation, uh, which So, one of the things that I've learned about Benton County and, um, you know, this is a short list for the sake of time, but you know, we know that, you know, drugs and zins are increasing year over year. There's, there's pervasive problem in southwest Tennessee, uh, western Tennessee around human trafficking. We know that's increasing by 25% a year. We also know that Sheriff has passed with really covering, um, a large amount of square, square miles for her officer. And that usually results in slower response time, not being able to get on scene um, as quickly as they like and being reactive to call, right? And we got an incident, they call in, Sheriff forces resources. What Flock allows us to do is take that preact approach and turn it into a proactive. Hey, we want to be notified when bad actors are coming into the county. Whether that's drug smugglers, known, um, burglars, or any person of interest. Let's be notified so that we can send, uh, resources there immediately as opposed to waiting until something bad happens. So, um, you know, I get to see this over and over. It's the best part of my job of when people implement Flock, the results speak for themselves and there's crazy return on investment in terms of protecting communities like Benton County. So we see decreasing in number of drug and human trafficking incidents. There's plenty of case studies to share there. Uh, we see, you know, Sheriff and his team being able to do more with less, right? We see it all over the, the, the country, people saying, hey, you know, we're short staffed, but we're being asked to do more. How can technology fill some of that gap, right? Um, and my whole thing with, with talking to Sheriff is really saying, let's protect what is great about Benton County. Uh, and we know that these, these public safety issues are only degrading communities all around the country. So how can we solve that? What are the ways to actually prevent, deter, um, and keeping these bad actors out of, out of the county? So how do we do that? Um, we call it collaborative policing technology. Um, these are devices that, uh, collect evidence so that Sheriff can ultimately respond faster, um, reduce overall crime, and then he's going to get the most out of his officers when they are in the scene. We see this as a force multiplier, so them being able to do more with less and clear, uh, case after case because of this actionable evidence. Um, so for the sake of this conversation, you know, it's important to note that Flock is a, one of the most innovative public safety technology companies ever. Um, but where we start with companies is license plate reader cameras and live view cameras. Um, with Sheriff specifically, we've decided to create a perimeter approach around saying, hey, if someone, um, that is a bad actor, think, you know, stolen vehicle, amber alert, silver alert, um, someone that committed a crime in Memphis, Tennessee, that's coming through, uh, Benton County, let's be notified right away in 15 seconds to say, hey, there's a person mentioned, let's go move in on that, that person so that no bad actions happen as a result. Um, that's primarily what we're focused on. Uh, but I think it's just important to know we're incredibly innovative and have a ton of hardware devices that are designed to collect evidence. Um, so going, going more detail on these license plate reader cameras, I'll pause if you have any questions. Um, these are connected to national databases, so NCIC database, so stolen vehicle, amber alert, missing person, um, you name it. We want to be notified proactively when those bad actors enter the town. And they're completely infrastructure free. So they run off solar, um, you know, you know, honestly, I never saw them in my town until I started looking for them. Um, but they also run on, on, on LTE, so cellular. And then the last piece I'll say is like, these things are working 24/7 where Sheriff's team is going to get alert, is going to get alert, um, even when they're not out there, right? They're 24/7, they don't take, uh, uh, vacation, they work on holidays, um, and they don't get sick, right? So incredible tool to prevent some of these pervasive, pervasive issues that you guys are dealing with. I'll, I'll, I'll tell this one story and then pause if you have any questions. Um, so this is Nolanville, Tennessee. Uh, we've got many, many cases about human trafficking, false stories and drug trafficking, false stories. For example, Knox County, um, they've decreased the number of overdose deaths by 26% and have seized 50 pounds of fentanyl this year alone. Absolutely amazing. But to paint this picture of how Flock works, um, this is like a classic example to kind of get your brain turning on the power of these systems. So, um, Nolanville, they got a, an LPR alert that a stolen vehicle had entered Nolanville. The officers went and detained that person. Turned out this guy was wanted for multiple crimes. Um, he had stolen property in his vehicle that they later returned, and he had illegally modified firearm in his truck. Um, and as you can imagine, you know, if they didn't have Flock, what would have happened if that person lingered, right? More theft, um, violence, who knows? But being able to proactively go apprehend that suspect goes a long way in terms of cleaning up, um, those bad actors in your county. Um, among the sales team, there's this running joke at Flock where Flock looks too good because what happens is this is an incredible deterrent. Brian moves from Benton County to the county over because these guys realize that they can't get out of the county unless, um, they go somewhere else because these cameras are going to pick them up. Any questions on those LPR cameras before I move forward? Okay, so like Sheriff said, one of the core benefits of Flock is you're getting access to our entire network of cameras. So if you look at this picture, this is Tennessee. All those green dots are license plate reader cameras that you guys would have access to. Um, I was working with, with a, a chief the other day who had a missing person in their town. They ran it through Flock and they followed that person or got hits from that person all the way from Tennessee to the Florida Keys. They were able to alert the father that the person was okay where they were at, et cetera. Um, but the beauty here is that you're going to get access to all these. So in Tennessee, over 2,700 cameras, um, that's over 307 law enforcement agencies that are using this and then working together to solve more crime together. So bad actor in Benton, maybe in a different town, maybe in a different town. How can we use all those data points, um, to, to prevent those people from continuing to act that way, um, and even apprehend them? Um, I think it's important to know, like, I think, you know, small counties, um, and people, and people like you who care about your quality of life know, um, that this was built with privacy in mind. So, um, we're doing no people detection. The only thing we are doing is vehicle identifiers. Hey, was this a Ford F-150 white pickup truck and license plate? Um, that being said, none of this data is ours, it's all owned by you and it automatically deletes in 30 days. So when it comes to data protection and privacy, these are really just an evidence collecting tool for those bad actors. Um, and because of that, you know, we make it super easy for you guys to audit how Flock is being used. Um, and one of the things we can do if it's of interest is off, offer this LPR transparency portal, which means you can put this link on your website where it says, hey, these are the number of cases that we solved with Flock. Um, these are the searches that we've done so that the community has keep in mind that these are being used um, in the right fashion and not infringing on any, uh, privacy concerns. Um, lot here, but the whole goal is to say, hey, you know, we want to use these tools to, to solve more crime, but we also want to make sure, uh, the community is safe with it and let's be as open and as transparent as possible. They're all being audit trailed, so, you know, for, uh, the decision makers and commissioners who ultimately have to account for, for how our money is spent, um, we'll easily be able to say at the end of the year, hey, um, this is how many cases we impacted. This is how many drug busts we solved because of, of Flock. This is how many stolen vehicles, um, this is how many thefts that we solved because of Flock. So when you think about the trickle down effect of your community, I think, you know, public safety is a cornerstone and ultimately is going to flow into, um, other aspects of people's life, education, home values, um, you know, community safety, et cetera. So transparency is, is something that we, we're, we really pride ourselves on, um, in whole. So this is kind of the last example of an amber alert on how quickly these, these, um, tools can solve crimes. So at 12:33, an amber alert was, was conducted, um, they put that in Flock at 1 o'clock. And now by 6:00 PM, we have a baby returned to her mother. So stories like this matter because you have to envision the alternative. You know, the alternative would be, hey, let's patrol the area and hopefully we see that vehicle. Hard to do. Um, the alternative would be go ask people and start that investigation, that's maybe the next day, a week later. Um, and time is so important. Um, in these cases, what you're seeing is the ability to respond fast and create, um, you know, win stories that ultimately could be life changing for some of your community, excuse me, for some of your community members. And then the last thing I'll just share is what you're getting in this package. So seven license plate reader cameras that, um, will create that perimeter approach. One of the things I forgot to mention is that there's the contract out with Camden PD. So you guys would have access to those as well. Um, so you're not just getting your cameras, but you're also getting access to theirs, working together, incredibly powerful. Um, two live view cameras that are just surveillance cameras to give Sheriff and County real time intelligence. And then you're going to get all of our software, so nationwide access, vehicle fingerprint technology, guardian mode. And then we would maintain, um, and do the permitting, um, and make sure all these cameras are always up to date and the top, top line of technology. I know you guys got a lot on your agenda today, but, but I am curious if anyone has questions, um, that I could answer around the system and what we're doing, um, in other counties like Benton.
Do you have anybody? Do you have cameras in Cato County that just browse I-40?
I, I believe so, yes. Um, I'll have to double check on that. I don't have my map pulled up, but I believe so. Uh, I can, I can, uh, I can pull up the map while we're, while we're talking here, but, um, I'm pretty sure. But let me, uh, triple check before I say it was 100%. Is that, is that an area of interest to you?
I can see right now, uh, I'm from the first district, uh, and we've got two exits in our district. We've got two truck stops up there. Sheriff's Park gets called to love truck stops. Good thing the catch records in our town, but, uh, rest of it's in Cato. Then we got the 133, I mean, we could use three cameras right there. That's the first district. If you get seven cameras, that would pretty well cover all of our entrances and maybe one spare. But you said they run off of, uh, cellular, cellular services, kind of like a Verizon tower, an AT&amp;T tower?
Any other providers, whatever works best in that specific area?
How easy, how easy is, is it to track an individual? Say that it's not coming through the system as whatever, but it's just a person?
Yeah, we won't be tracking people at all, uh, just people.
If you wanted to track my vehicle, how easy is that?
I mean, it, it, the, the first thing is we'd have to have a reason to search for your vehicle. So, um, you know, say you drive a Ford F-150 pickup truck. We can look, we can look at pictures of all vehicles that match that description. Uh, but what we're really trying to do is tie that to evidence of a crime. Um, so we would never put your license plate in our system just to track for, for the fun of it. It would be a reason to, that based on an investigation.
Has this technology been challenged in court yet?
I think I did, I think I heard you say it's challenging to work with?
In court?
In court.
Has, has the technology been challenged in court?
Oh, no, I mean, we have 2,000, over 2,000 cameras in Tennessee. Um, there has been some, uh, random lawsuits in Texas, um, that you could look up, but, um, you know, the whole deal here is we're, we're not infringing on anyone's personal, personal, uh, privacy. It's just vehicular data. And the backing point there is that 80% of most crimes involve a vehicle. Right? So, you know, if, like in my example, we're looking for that black Chevy pickup truck and masking the time to the location, now we have a reason to put that license plate in the system.
Did you find out, did you find out in Carroll County, in Sheriff County?
Yes, I did. So let me go back here real quick. Yeah, and, and Sheriff asked me not to share location specifically, so I want to respect that, but, um, I understand your, your concern. So there are cameras south of you in Perry County, um, Dickerson, uh, Dixon County, um, Waverly is getting cameras, I believe. Um, I got that Camden and then Henry County has a lot of cameras. Um, and then also Henderson County and Decatur County. Great benefit too, right? Cause one of the, the benefits of Flock is the more cameras, the more powerful it is to ultimately solve those crimes because you're going to get multiple hits at different locations. So if someone comes in and, uh, does a drug transaction in Benton County, hey, if they go back to Memphis or Jackson or wherever, um, now that they're on that hot lip that Sheriff's going to put them on, they can ultimately be picked up on other cameras as well.
Let me ask this question to you and Sheriff. If somebody has a violation, probation out of the general sessions court, would they get entered into the NCIC? Would they have a, a failure to appear, a warrant, or would they have, uh, anything, or is there certain crimes that you want to get into the NCIC?
Whatever we entered in there, if there is a crime being committed, there's a warrant for them, as you call, even if they're a suspect or something. If we enter, or any other agents enter, then it will, it will pop up whenever it goes through the system. They go past one of these cameras, it will notify where they're at.
Well, I mean, dealing in the probation business, I know that we had violation, probation warrants. They turn around and bail, bail the court, have another crime, whatever. Sheriff's Department enters them into it. A lot of those folks are not going to go a long ways off, but they're going to be within one version, one counties and we won't be able to pick them up where they have another drug deal, where they have another next of a song. What are the situations be? And I know up at the south end, the, the, the people that's coming in and out of those truck stops up there. If somebody entered in a stolen vehicle, license plate, and they hit it, I mean, that's going to be a big asset to the Sheriff's Department, in my opinion. It's just like replacing one officer, uh, seven officers through 27 by a month.
We just had this situation come up this morning, stolen vehicle in our county. Then a harasser called, come in where he was harassing, uh, some young lady on the south end. If we had had this license plate reader system in there and he passed by, he had his camera, it would give us within 15 seconds. and he passed by, he had his camera, it would give us within 15 seconds where he was at. And if he passed by one of these real-time cameras, it would give us a good shot of the vehicle exactly what he was looking for. Which made his job a whole lot better. He actually got away from it. Car out in the woods, stolen car. We looked for him for several hours up there with drones and tracking dogs, but we didn't find him. He had more than two other counties, so he would have been in the system. If he was in those counties, immediately when he come into our county, we would have been notified the first camera he come out. We plan on putting these on the borders of our counties, so as soon as they enter our county, we have time to react. Our county, y'all know, is about eight miles west of us, about six, seven miles along. But it takes a lot of time to get there. Officers tied up, just gives them a jump on getting in that area. I know that the drug dealing is tremendous, it goes on more and more with recently. Been working with Drug Task Force, and had a very large bunch of hounds, not ounces, not pounds, hounds, that's exactly what we did one call the day in northern county. We directly connected that to cartel. But we know it's in here, we know the human trafficking has went up according to statistics. TBI was in and spoke with me this last week, and my chief. And human trafficking is up in West Tennessee this year alone, almost 20% already. These are real lives out here that are being taken, being destroyed, and they don't return. And you get them, most of them, you never get them back. It's going on right here, it's going on right under our noses, if we don't get ahead of it with everything we can throw at it. This year, I don't know if any of you booked it, but we're asking for more manpower. We've gotten to increase the size of this department over 20 years. And for 11 years, I've asked for more officers. We're at the point where we're going to have to have the help. These cameras would help us tremendously. When we spoke with Jordan, I was so impressed with what they can do, have done in other places. Giving us access to all these others around the county. We know what's coming at us before it gets here, and we've got plenty of time to react to it. I think it's a very good investment. I'll let him go ahead and talk to you, Matt, because he is so knowledgeable and can give us so many examples. This human trafficking is something, it's going to affect us right here. Some of your kids, wives, daughters, if they're out somewhere, they get picked up, they hit truck stop, or wherever they're gone. But it's going on. We may not want to hit it, but it's going on, and it's going on more and more. Up almost 20% in one year in West Tennessee. Not just the drugs, that is directly affecting. Anything that we put into this system, and it enters this system up here, we're going to get the benefit of like 2700 cameras. Whole state for this crime. So I think it's a good investment.
With a lot of chiefs and sheriffs, and that's the best part of my job, is when they call me, you know, a couple months after buying it, and say, hey, this is what happened. But we've got incredible videos online about human trafficking and what we've done, but just imagine, you know, what would you do with a tip about a human trafficking suspect today? You know, how are you going to find that person? And the odds are very low that you would. Same goes with drug trafficking. I'm sure some of you have been affected by drugs in some form or fashion in Benton County. What does that do to families? What does that do to communities? And more importantly, how do you solve those crimes? It gets really difficult unless you're using technology and collaborating with other law enforcement agencies.
How do they mount? Do they mount on utility poles, or you got your own poles?
Yeah, so we can put them on your guys' poles or our poles. There's a whole permitting process, which is, you know, a whole different story that we manage, but never want you guys to go through it, because our dot is quite the, you know, back and forth process. But depending on the location determines the pole type, if that makes sense.
I like to say, when you go to the Sheriff's Association, and the vendors are there and show us all the different things that are out there, tell us to do our job. Just by far, it's ahead of anything else that I've seen. And for the price, I was really surprised at the price of what it was. They're going to take care of everything. There's no getting calls or something else to come up. We've got to take care of our people if we want to keep living in this area that we live in and have the quality of life we've got. It may not be the perfect place, but it's a whole lot better if somebody's never lived anywhere else. You just don't understand how bad it can be and how good we've got it here. I'd like to give it.
Anyone else? Okay, we need to move on. Thank you for your presentation, if you can hear me or not.
Great evening. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you got anything else to say, Sheriff?
No, just to repeat real quick what I said, the human trafficking is up like 20% almost in one year. And we know how bad the drugs are. We know we're tied to the cartel. I mean, there's issues. We've got people right there that we see every day at the ballpark that are dealing with drugs. And we just don't have the manpower, and we don't have the equipment we need to stay ahead of this thing. Because this is something that's not going to go away, it's just going to be worse. So if we get out in front of it right now, before it grows anymore, I think it's a very good investment. That money situation is up, we all know it presented, so if you have lots out there, so we can technically get a business account. That's our business, that's what we're here to do. I thank y'all for your time.
I have a question. Will it give information like how fast cars are running and reading the tags, if the tags expire and things like that?
No, it won't give us anything except what's put in the system. It's not one of, I don't confuse it with the speed cameras that you see in these other places. I think that's not an idea. I think that's not what I think we need, like to take their lap. This, just anybody that puts in anything, or any agent showing that that person is wanting for whatever, they're a suspect in a murder, down to, as he was saying, probation, violation of probation, if it's in that system, and they drive a vehicle that, you know, is, what do they call them? A white F-150, then when it goes by there with their tag on, it's going to let us know that they went through that area. Y'all may remember just a couple months ago, three, four months ago, we had a man out of Huntsville, Alabama, that wasn't missing up here on the interstate. This license plate reader tracked him going from Huntsville all the way into Nashville. Five or six different places that he passed by in Nashville, and then coming down Florida, coming this way. That's the last time we could see whether that vehicle coming to Benton County, or the traffic force that ended in Benton County. So that give them a place to start, of course, we found his vehicle up there, but I don't know if he's ever been located or not. They don't even know if it was him driving, but they do know his vehicle.
Okay, we're going to move on to number six on the agenda. The approval of the minutes, the motion in a second. We have a motion by Commissioner King, and a second by Commissioner Holland. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Anyone oppose? Number seven is the Board of Public Utilities, name motion in a second. We have a motion by Commissioner Arnold, and a second by Commissioner Price. Okay, I think we need to do it now. Wanda has noticed a few changes on the minutes that she... Changes you wanted to make?
They weren't made, I just started into what it needed to be done. It was in January, I'll give everybody a handout so you'd know. The line items, it was in the resolution to go it on, or was wrong. So that's what your second page is, it's showing you to correct it. Nothing else has been changed at all, the resolution itself. Not changes a lot, the line items, it was wrong, it was on three. So I needed to bring that up and put y'all's in. That's what was voted on, was another line item, but it is the same.
So has everybody, have you had time to look at it? Because we need to vote on these changes, so they will be official.
Nothing either word has changed at all, it was just a wrong line item. Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion in a second to approve the changes that Madam Clerk has told you about?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, and a second by Commissioner Nunder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, now we're back to the Board of Public Utilities. I need, all in favor of approving that report, say aye. Anyone oppose? Moving on to on the agenda, we're going to start our resolutions now. We've got 30, it's going to take a while, but before, and this resolution number one may take a lot of discussion, so we're going to take a 10-minute break.
...
The resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to seek permission and authority to move the Benton County Mayor's Office to the county-owned building at 121 North Forest Avenue in Camden. We need a motion, we have a motion by Terry King and a second by Mike Nundrin. The floor is open for discussion. Who's first?
I'd like to make a motion to amend this resolution, that we include, that we move up here, Benton County Chamber of Commerce into that building along with the Chairman, who is Director of the Economic and Community Development into the building also. There's nothing in it that they could go in. They're going to need a place, right now they're having at least one, and there's a lot of potential there for that building, having an LED sign at the top, or something like that, to promote our community. So I make a motion to amend that, to let those people in that building.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to amend the amendment, to read that also going into that building will be the Chamber of Commerce and the Community Economic Development.
Madam Chair, I'll be first up there to speak, before Commissioner Arnold.
You'll be next, I'm sorry. Okay. Tonight, if you want to speak, you've got your tablets in front of you, push your tablet, because we're going to, we will go in order that you push your tablet, it will show up here.
Oh, it's number one.
Okay. So we've got a motion on the floor, do we have a second to that motion? Okay, it's been seconded by Commissioner Miller. Does everyone understand what that amendment is? As soon as they get it fixed, we'll vote.
Move the Chamber of Commerce?
Chamber of Commerce.
You have to vote on the amendment, and then you'll be to speak.
We're ready for votes over here.
Okay, this is, you're voting for the amendment to include the Chamber and the Economic Development Office in the building? Okay. Lori with the Chamber would like to say something before we vote.
On order, Madam Chairman, we're ready to vote.
Okay, that's fine. He doesn't want you to speak, Lori, I'm sorry. Okay, then everyone vote for the amendment, if you're for the amendment.
Anyone want to change their vote? Twelve yes, three no, three yes.
Okay, the amendment has passed. Now we're back to the resolution as it was just amended. Commissioner Bane.
What I wanted to say is that we need to table this resolution until all the legal matters are completed. The Controller stated in the county audit that some of the state statutes were violated with the original resolution and the purchase of the building, which makes it illegal. And if we go forward with this resolution, then this will be another one that's going to be illegal. Two wrongs do not make a right.
What are you talking about in the audit?
In the audit, the Controller said that we violated state statutes in the purchase of this building with the resolution. It's in the audit.
Do you have a copy of that?
Not with me, but I got it.
I would like to see that, because it's not in anything that I've received. I don't know where you're getting your information from.
In the audit that Charles sent me over there.
Okay, we have a motion for a table.
Thank you twice.
Second.
We have a second to table it. Okay, if you're in mo, you need to fix that. Okay. Yeah, we got a vote on it. Okay. Okay.
Well, Commissioner King's first.
Just a minute, let me set this up. I've got the right names on here. We've got one to speak next.
Well, right now we have a motion.
Motion? Okay, so we're going to vote on the table?
Right, so I have my own to speak. Tabling simply moves it to the end of the meeting.
Negative.
I don't believe it puts it off, I believe it has to postpone to move it out of this meeting.
Mr. Melton is correct. If you table it, it will come up at the end of the meeting, unless you specify. That's the way I have been trained. If you want to move it to a different month, you postpone it, and you specify when you want it postponed.
This fiscal year has not been audited yet, when I think of this fiscal year.
I know, that's good, I was wondering if she can...
So are you referring to Commissioner Bane's remarks?
Referring to the statement that it was audited, that was done in this fiscal year, and it can't be audited in this fiscal year, it's all...
Well, what I was saying was until the legal matters are resolved, so the legal matters are not going to be resolved by the end of the meeting.
Is there a lawsuit filed?
No, no lawsuits filed.
Well, later you could...
So when you table, motion, you table it to the end of the meeting, and then if you want to bring it back up, you have to vote to bring that back up at the end of the meeting to bring it off the table.
To delay action, Madam Chairman, is to lay on the table, postpone it to a definite time, or refer it to a committee. And when you look at... Sometimes a meeting wants, you want to lay a main motion aside temporarily without setting a time for resuming its consideration, but with the provision that a motion can be taken up again whenever the majority subsides. This is accomplished by a motion to table or lay on the table. The motion has the effect of delaying action on a main motion, if such a meeting does not live a question. The effect of the motion to table is to prevent action from being taken to the main motion. Indeed, rather than either pass or defeat a motion, a meeting will sometimes choose to bury it by tabling, but that's not what we're trying to do, we're trying to table it for another time.
Well, you need to specify when you want to table it to.
It's whenever we want to bring it back up. But we can do that. Debbie, would you go for, table it for three months?
Yes.
Make your motion.
I'll make that one, okay. I made a motion, we table it for three months.
Okay, well, I need a second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to table it for three months, we're going to vote.
Can we do that with a motion already before?
Yes.
So now you're voting if you want to table this for three months or not. So, everyone, are y'all ready to vote on the table?
We're ready, but there are other people wanting to speak. Now's the time for them to speak, personally, if I have to vote. It's up to you, Madam Chairman.
Phil, did you say what you had to say? You were number one on my screen here.
Yes, I did, and what they're talking about is different than just table. They're tabling for, or moving for a specific amount of time, it's different than just table, table it places to the end of the meeting.
I agree with Mr. Melton, but anyway. Number two, Mr. Arnold.
Would it be, could I ask the Chamber of Commerce Director to speak at this time, since we have not voted on it? About what she wanted to say, what'll go on for that?
Let us vote on the table. And get that on or off, okay? If it passes, there's probably no use. Commissioner Fowler.
You know, I'll just, I'll show you, this is signed in twenty-four. Finding only was on twenty-four, or two twenty-four, Level O three, it says all about capital outlaying, and his issue of capital outlay notice, noted on October sixteen twenty-four, and the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. This is approved by State Compt, or no production, and our recommendation. Anyways, there was a finding on it, I think it's page two twenty, in that last audit, but it's twenty-four forward, Level O three.
Yeah, I didn't agree with that, because it was a finding on something that happened in the next year when they were doing an audit of the twenty-three year.
It is a finding.
But it's already been corrected, and it says it, what you just said.
Given your reaction, we'll do better, we can curve the findings with the follow state statutes when issued that in the future. You know, we're going to know what we're doing as it is. I wouldn't speak on one thing, you want to move into a building that the roof has been leaking for four years, folks, if we did an inspection on it properly, we would have known that, with that of the building, Mr. Wade Door, he's been over here twice.
Commissioner Fowler, let's vote on the, okay, you'll be the next one to talk, let's get the table, let's vote on the table, because if it's tabled, then we're tabling it. You can talk first, after we vote on the table. Okay, the floor is open now, we're going to vote on the motion that was to table it for three months, if you're for the, to table it, vote yes, if you're not for table it, buzz no.
You know, would you change your vote? Motion failed, six yes, nine oh, three yes.
Okay, this resolution is not tabled. Resolution is still on the floor as it was amended. Now, Commissioner Fowler, you speak first.
Yeah, well, on this field here, just like the findings was it, the building was bought prior to ever the inspection, we got the doctors, we didn't get, there are certain of your particular occupancy that was taken back in April of mine, that we haven't done with that, we know it's been leaking for four years, it looks like the dialation hook in, and talked about it in my space, Wade Door has worked on it twice. Market property says that we can get it sprayed with something and give it cash for eighty-seven hundred dollars. You know, it's been living six years, going to worry about an older building, it's against the, before we put people like Lori and things in there, we talked, talked, ain't nothing against anybody, you know, buying things of that nature, against buying something, just like we've got a problem already, and Charlie has solved the problem, he's put a lot of money into that. Senior citizens, we just don't need to do it again. We've got a nice building coming up down here, and when the extension moves, and why do you want, you just want to take the chance to move into a building with roofs, we've done replacing tiles, the lights in it already, the plumbing fix coming already, it's just bad business. I mean, and also, you got, you said there's no lawsuit, you're pending, but what I read in my letter, it's pending a lawsuit pending on the Controller of ours, and we haven't heard nothing from him. Why, you know, there's a lot of things at stake right here, there is a lot of things at stake, and why, what's the hurry? What is the hurry? It was a hurry to go by before the resolution was ever followed through on, and even Phil, Phil, when I come here, I said, you know, Mayor bought the, what did you say in Walmart? I said, you know, Mayor bought the first thing? Yeah, you didn't. No, what did he not, what'd you say? Yes, I will, sir.
I would like to respond. I would like to respond to...
Where he deserves a good place.
Fowler, if I could, if he's finished talking.
I'm done.
Okay.
The inspection was done prior to the purchase of the building, just like the commit, wait a minute, don't butt in on me.
But I'm getting shit ready.
Go ahead and finish what you guys said. You bet in on me on every time I try to speak, and all I'm trying to do is rebut what you said, because I did it. Are you going to be quiet, let me speak, please? May I speak, Madam?
Yes, speaking to your microphone, sir, by can hear.
All I was going to say is, you've repeatedly said that the building was purchased before the inspection was done. The resolution that you amended asked me to have the City of Camden inspector to inspect the building prior to buying the building. I went the next day after that meeting, and he did the walkthrough inspection just as you requested, so I would appreciate it if you quit telling everyone opposite of what actually happened. The inspection was done, everything that was on his list of what needed to be corrected, took a little bit of time, and we got that corrected, and then he come back with the fire marshal to do the final inspection, which you cannot do until you own the building. So, to get a certificate of occupancy, you have to have ownership of the building, have it prior inspected before you buy it, so you know what you're getting into, but then he comes and does the final inspection, and has the fire marshal with him to sign off on your fire extinguishers, your fire alarms, and smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors and such, and then they issue you the certificate of occupancy, which you have a copy of. But that's, I did exactly what this board asked me to do, in the sequence that you have to do it by law. And I don't appreciate somebody saying the opposite every single time they get up and speak.
Commissioner Arnold.
I know, Madam Chairman, that this is a kind of a heated discussion, a lot of people that, we've got a lot of opinions about it, that they are very passionate about. I know, Madam Chairman, that this is a, uh, kind of a heated discussion. A lot of people that we, everybody's got a lot of, uh, opinions about it that they are very passionate about. And I, I, everybody's entitled to their opinion and their, uh, about what they feel about this building. Uh, that building is owned by Benton County. Now, the first thing we always talk about is roofs. That's got a roof on it, you know, every flat roof I've ever seen. Won't have to have patches on it if you have to win storms or whatever you win. The building may have to house a work on it. But unless you build a brand new facility, you're never going to have a building that you're going to have to do some working remodeling to, to make it fit to what you need. That building was purchased at a good price point for the county. It's a good investment for the county. Uh, these offices in this courthouse was designed when you elected one official and their wives to work in. You got an office down there with four people sitting on top of each other trying to do their job. I don't know about job, I can't work for somebody, you know, looking down back in my neck all the time. You know, so, you know, we, we talked about a lawsuit. We don't have a lawsuit. We got some opinions of what the county's done wrong. If we've done something wrong, I'm sorry, you know, but we own that building. So why are we going to just keep kicking the can down the road? You know, we don't have a lawsuit, sue us. You know, police know who it is. It's still a hide and mine on the third. You know, I'd like to know who it is, who it is the clients are. I ain't got nothing against any of them. If I was a suit, I ain't got nothing against Randy Shannon. He's a friend of mine. Me and Duane fuss all the time just for fun, you know? And, and we're friends. Me and Mark don't agree all the time, but when we get done, we'll be friends. But we own that building. Let's maintain our assets and, and move along and, and do what we got to do to make things better. You know, everybody had always complained with Benton County, you don't have this, if we don't have that, why can't you get this? You know, when you compare Benton County to even to Tager County, go look at the buildings they got. You know, they're modern, they're new, they look good, the court square looks good. You know, when you went out trying to win the love of your wife, you didn't go around with her hair sticking up, your teeth not brushed, your shirt still hanging out, did you? You cleaned yourself up a little bit, did not, maybe she made you like you a little bit. We ain't got nothing that looks good. You know, when somebody comes to Benton County, appearance has been everything. You put the Chamber of Commerce in there, like I said at the meeting the other night, you got a big sign up there, you put a double surface LED sign up there. You can see it coming into the county west, east, you can sit off the court square. You can promote our events that we have in our county, the chamber could even rent out spots to their members and on an LED sign for advertising. You know, you go to other counties, they promote their county. You'll go to what Paris is doing, you know, they, they cut all the trees on the court square, made it look better, sold the grass. Appearance means a lot. But all we want to do is pack something or halfway cover it up instead of making Benton County look like it needs to be in order to attract industry and people coming to our county. Now, I'm sorry, I mean, everybody's got an opinion and I, I, everybody's entitled to one, but that's mine. We need to move along with our buildings and go along and fix them up, just like we was talking about the old electric office over there. The county bought that building, did we not? Did they have it inspected by anybody? Or they just backed an electric company? You know?
Were you asking a question?
A little bit of both, go ahead.
Now, one minute.
But, you know, when we bought that building, it needs some paint done on it. Let's maintain what we got. We own the building, the county going to take it back. And the court ain't going to make them take it back. So, you know, it's ours. Let's go ahead and fix it up and move along.
Commissioner Fowler. Commissioner Fowler, let me recognize you, please, okay? Before you interrupt.
We own the electric building all the way. It never changed anything. This here has never become a government property.
It's not true.
Okay, let him fin, let him finish, then you can respond.
Fourth thing, the Benton County electric system owned that building. The Benton County electric system is a totally separate legal entity from the general governor of Benton County. It is a, its own living being. It has nothing to do with, with the general government of Benton County. It's got the name Benton County on it, but it's a sole entity. So no, Benton County never owned that building. The electric system owned that building. If the county owned it, why did we pay for it?
Yeah, you know, it's always been a real good question.
Because it's a separate entity. It's all our separate business.
Uh, Commissioner Fowler. Commissioner.
Sorry.
You're about right. It was during the term of Mayor Lashley that we bought the building.
Right.
Okay, Commissioner Bane, you're recognized.
Uh, I think Terry was before me.
Okay, that's fine.
Points that, that I see is, is, one, number one, I'm not against the chamber moving in and Jennifer moving into the bill. Got no problem with that. I think that's a great idea. The issue that, that I see, number one, I haven't met one person in the sixth district that said, yes, that's a good idea. The mayor made a comment to me that I wasn't even on permission yet, so what does it matter? Well, it matters a lot to me. Uh, it matters that I listen to what people say. Uh, does it affect them? Sure, it does. Half a million dollars for the mayor to have a nice office that looks nice. So he can entertain dignitaries. That doesn't make a difference to me or to people in the sixth district. What does matter is when you look at overcrowding, as, uh, Commissioner Arnold had mentioned, you know, uh, what's the most busy, what's the busiest, other than the court system, the busiest office in this county, courthouse? It's a clerk, right? And I have not talked to one of them, me or have not had this conversation. But that makes more sense for her to move there. It's already set up in sellers. And it, that just makes sense. The mayor can have her office and renovate it and make it nice so he can entertain. For him having privacy, all he's got to do is lock his doors, don't let nobody in, he's having a meeting. I mean, for half a million dollars, you do a lot of stuff. Not counting what's going to happen in the future.
May I respond, Mr. King?
That's my point.
When it gets finished, you can respond.
You can put words in my mouth all you want to. And I'm not upset at all with you having a difference of opinion than me, never. I mean, that's what government's about. That's why we have 18 commissioners. But don't say half a million dollars when it's 480,000, please.
He said it was just renovated about eight years ago.
No, I'm saying don't, don't fluctuate the money when it's not what it was. It's not a half a million dollars. It was 480,000. But the other thing is, I have never said I wanted that so I could boast and say I have a nice mayor's office. Well, y'all have, you and Terry and, uh, Duane and some of you, but I have never said that. From day one, when I started looking at the First Bank building, it was for the mayor's office. Not for Mark Ward to put his name on the building like y'all keep telling everyone. I don't appreciate that. I'm not vain at all. I don't care where my office is. But I've been working in that office long enough to know that they can't do their job properly when you've got five people on top of each other in three rooms. You've got desk on top of desk, you've got filing cabinets, you don't even have room to put all the paperwork that we have to keep for the state. I never intended this to be a mayor's office for Mark Ward. I looked at this as the need that we needed in the courthouse to make it run more efficiently. Yeah, it would be nice to have a meeting in my office without people walking through. I was meeting with Congressman Kustoff this past week. He came in with his four guys. He and two of his guys came in, the other two sat in Gene's office in a chair and kind of listened from the distance. Four people walked through to go back to the back office during our meeting. I'm just telling you what we're up against. Unless I want to schedule a meeting and go up to the electric company or somewhere else in town, you can't have a meeting. It's not for me to put my name on the building. And I wish you quit saying that.
I didn't say that.
You just got through saying that.
I did not say it was Mark Ward building.
That's, that, that's what you're insinuating, but I'm just saying that bothers me because I'm not that type person. I'm looking to run the county government efficiently. And that was the most common sense place. There's, there's how many mayor's office that are still in courthouse in West Tennessee? Back in the seventies, sixties, when they built all these courthouses, it was fine. But it's not efficient now. You can't, you can't run your office in these little spots with the employees that you have to have to keep up with all the work that we have to do. Uh, I've seen it perpetuate so much during my two and a half years up here of what we have to do for the comptroller every day. We have, uh, auditor from the comptroller's office that's in our office, probably six months out of the year. I know none of y'all probably know that, but we do. And we have to provide them with the space. So it's just something that's needed and that's the only reason I've looked into it. And plus, the price was great, the location was great, the building was just remodeled in 2018. It's in really good shape. Uh, regardless of what, uh, Commissioner Fowler says, it, it is in great shape. I, I just don't like you to put words in my mouth and I, I'm not trying to call you out. You can have a difference, you can have a difference of opinion with me all you want. It don't bother me. Tomorrow, I'm gonna, whether I move in that building or not, I'm gonna come in and do my job and I'm gonna do it to the best of my ability. But this has never been about me. It's been about the people that's been here for 42 and 44 years, that's worked in that office and are working on top of each other and can't even hear what they're trying to talk about because of all the traffic that's out in the hall and next door. I don't know if you've been in the building or not, but there is a space about this wide between the wall and the front doors that you can hear everything that's going on in one of its office and over in the hall. There, there's a gap there. And, and so you have to kind of work over everyone and everything that's going on around you. And now, which we've got two people in each office just about that's working, there's stuff going on when they're on the phone. It's hard to concentrate. That's the only thing I was trying to solve. So I just appreciate it if you wouldn't, uh, try to spin it a different way because it's never been that way and I've said that from the start.
Commissioner Prosser, recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I'd like to go back to the original resolution that was amended. And correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner. I don't have it in front of me, what was it called? The amendment was for, but I do remember language in there about state and local codes. Not just a local city employee walking through with a, uh, representing the local fire department. Uh, to me, correct me if I'm wrong, states and local codes can take a state level as in a representative of the state fire local office and a state electrical inspector. Those are states. But as a state level requirement, Mr. Mayor, who, who was the fire marshal representing?
I'd have to ask the people that inspected them. I don't, I'm not sure who it was, but, um, I think it was the county fire chief, I'm pretty sure. Well, and you said a state electrical inspector? I know that. I use them every day in my business. I understand that. But you only have to have electrical inspection if the service has been off for over a year. You have a letter that I included and you've got, you've got two or three different copies of it that lets you understand that.
Does it, does our state, uh, does the, uh, local fire chief qualify as a state fire?
I don't know if he qualifies as a state fire marshal, but he qualifies to do the inspection. And just like your codes guy for the city, he does the inspections and sends that to the state.
Where can we see a copy of the, uh, fire marshal or the fire chief's report? Should have had a written report.
I think you already got a copy of that, but I'll get you another one if you want it. I, I gave you all that in a packet, uh, when we did that last month or month before, before all this come up with Randy Shannon.
Commissioner Prosser, I do know that the city fire chief does inspections. Mr. Jeff Pierce.
Nothing, nothing against Jeff, I mean, just a question.
Commissioner Bane. You came on, okay. Commissioner, I'm trying to get to everyone else before we go back to Commissioner Fowler. Commissioner Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that the mayor's office does need additional space. I'm delighted that the Chamber of Commerce, we could put them in that building. I think it'd be perfect for it. But this motion, this resolution now is amended, we're just going to vote to say, yep, they can move in there. I think maybe we would all be better served. It's been said that, what's the hurry? Well, I know we're anxious to get in there and get it done. I would like to see us think about referring this back to the property committee. I would like to ask the property committee along with the mayor's office and maybe the lawyer's office. Who's going to decide what part of the building, who you just want? If you tell me I can move in there, you know, I'm gonna go over there and find me a place by the window to air conditioner and, you know. I think that it's a good idea. I'm for it. But maybe we need to tighten it up a little bit and have our property committee, who is the property committee to do that? Work out some floor space or come up with some kind of agreement that, hey, this is where the chamber office is going to be, this is where the mayor's office is going to be. This is how we're going to use the, the, the facility. And, uh, I'm going to put that in form of a motion. I would like to, uh, move that we refer this back to the property committee. Uh, I would like to, uh, uh, refer this back to the property committee in such time as they have some actions for us to return back. And, uh, we can vote, yes or no.
Mr. Murphy, it, I don't know if you know that the chamber has rented a place now for 12 months. So that would give a total of almost a year to make plans for the chamber coming in.
Madam Chair, I appreciate that, but who's going to make the plan?
I would assume the property committee would make those plans.
Then I review my motion to, uh, uh, re, uh, refer this, uh, resolution to the proper committee and then they've, uh, come up with a suitable floor plan. Then let's move forward then.
Commissioner Murphy, did you withdraw that?
I did not. I'll second it.
Okay, does everyone understand? Well, we, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Commissioner Fowler.
You know, Mark said I was remodeled, but the roof, the roof is leaking. Mark, how long have you, uh, been working on the current place? We're going over two or three weeks trying to fix stuff. City cows, lots, uh...
I wa, I wasn't going to say anything. I, I've bit my tongue. But I think everybody here understands what's going on. We have a politically motivated two or three people that have fought this since February of last year. And just because they were against it and they can't stand it, they've been beat. They've hired an opponent of mine that I beat in the election two to one to bring it forward. forward and claim that there's gonna be a lawsuit, claim that there's gonna be an ouster, claim that we can't come back and revisit this until the end of my term and the threats. I think everybody sees what's going on here, so I just think everybody should vote their conscience and move on. I mean, it's true.
Commissioner, Commissioner Arnold?
I thought I was giving five minutes.
You've had about ten, but Commissioner Arnold, you're next.
Listen, you know, the deal is... There is no lawsuit. He's been in the control. The building was bought, did not complete a resolution. Never got a, uh, code, made a decision to get a lawsuit. Here's your initial findings from him. Would you buy a car, a brand new car, if you didn't know what the warranty was on it? I mean, would you do that, or would you go in and fix it all and then buy it? And you talk about the pretty thing, Frank, what did you say in property? We need a nice, pretty place, so people can go. We said we had a pretty sign, so people can see the digital. Those end, you got on the menu, we created the amendment. We're looking for a nice, pretty place, or pretty place, pretty place. It ain't got no awards hanging on the building. No, it ain't one of them there. You see, it ain't, it ain't eight and a half a million dollars. Yeah, it is, comes July the first, first night you're in this, twenty-three thousand dollars from October to the end. So, hey, that's five hundred and three thousand dollars. You know, I made it through twelve-three and a little bit of college, so I know that's right. And then you take all the time we spend in this building, putting tile in, putting the lights in, fixing the water, fixing the wiring. Yes, it's on our time, it's on what we serve county right now. And I've got an estimate right here for eighty-five thousand dollars to replace the roof on it already, and it's been leaking for four years. Do you think there might be some mold in there? Do you think there's some structural damage in there? I'm just saying, we're gonna keep on, keep on pitching money at it. Nothing against the senior citizens, 'cause I pushed for that and get that done no matter what it costs, because senior citizens' tax dollars is about what we give you. So, they need their building, add extension. You talk about not moving the mayor's, not moving the mayor's office, the courthouse. Well, when you do that, what does the mayor usually deal with it? There's property taxes, assessment, and trustee. That's about it. I mean, that's what you are. So, you wanna travel backwards and forth? We'll talk about that. Big walkway somebody gonna put in no time. It's just not a good, it's just not a good diesel buy. It's just not a good diesel buy with our trackware to find something without having it inspected. What happens? You get down there and the floor removes it, the bottom down there, there's a hole down there. Somewhere run down them walls because the bricks been put on afterwards. Yeah, I don't know why everybody wants to jump a gun and look at something and buy something, but when you don't, when you don't, you're like, are you afraid somebody else is gonna do this? I promise you nobody's gonna do to get that. If they do, get to keep it on tax, for the tax roll and make money off of it, and we're good. We done halfway decent. Somebody's gonna tell you that we made lots of money off of it, off the sale of Walmart. We made about a hundred grand with time to take away all the tax we lost into, what we put into it, because we tried, a lot of people tried to turn it into a new, a new courthouse. It's just, it's not, we jumped the gun on this, inspected it, you know you're probably gonna spend before you done, probably seven hundred thousand dollars more. And then that don't include your ADA that comes to the DLJ, our government building. When you do that right there, you can't put, you can't leave that bank in there with an able-bodied person walking down the stairs from the bathroom, and a person that can't walk down the stairs, that's got a wheelchair, all the way around the sidewalk, forty yards, two doors, go into the park. Now, that's called discrimination, and you might as well be saying, Rosa Parks, go to the back of the bus. Now, that's stupid.
Commissioner Fowler, I think you repeated yourself. Commissioner, Commissioner Arnold?
Okay, let me have an extra three minutes. First of all, if pretty don't sell, if something looking good don't sell, Duane will be paying cars. Okay? And make it, well, we'll put the building back.
Don't interrupt when somebody's speaking, please.
The thing about the breezeway, which I missed, Mr. Bain, on intended, a breezeway, would you walk inside? Should have said a foyer, but anybody would have sense, and I could have seen you even build a big breezeway across the horse wire. But you can interpret whatever you want to, or I ain't gonna say nothing else.
Commissioner Nunry?
But, let me finish. Just a second, Madam Chair. That building, Mark, they talked about the bathroom going down the steps. Duane, you know what bathroom is there?
Where?
At the, at First Bank.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, there's one up on the main left, right there you go in. But, first thing we're...
Duane, please hold your comments.
Well...
Just answer it and hush.
We keep kicking and kicking and kicking. That's all we've ever done in this county, push something back. We don't need nothing. We just barely buy what we got. What does it got, it's only...
In a curve, it's...
And then we go on to something else. Now, I'm fine. I mean, we, you know, I said, we ain't thinking each other all the time, but the fact is, if it wouldn't look in something, don't look good, he wouldn't be paying cars and putting it in the show. He can go out there with them scratched off and the roof, pick the paint pulling off the roof. We need to build an annex, and they need an annex on the horse wire. Hendrick County's got an annex in an old, old building upstairs. If they bring, if they move the juvenile court in, they move the tax assessors in, they move the property assessors in, the registered thieves, not even the courthouse. You know, the mayor's office upstairs at Hendrick County, you got the mayor and secretary in one office, the rest of them down in the basement. You know, you gotta have room. I'm in there talking to the mayor one day and some of the commissioners walked right in, and, oh, y'all boys done it. We done it, I been meaning. What? But it could have been. You know, there's no privacy in this courthouse, and, you know, I wish we just decided, we gonna have an asset, we got it, we own it, fix it up, move on the land and life. The property committee could probably cannot come up with a drawing, because it was a tie of the night during the committee meeting where they're not to recommend it. Two for, two against. You know, how are we gonna come up with a, with a drawing? You know, the chamber goes down to the basement in the lower part, it's got its own access door, the mayor's upstairs. You know, it's gonna take you some time to go in there and renovate, if you wanna move offices or whatever you wanna do. We got a year, we're paying rent on the chamber, give us time to fix things up the way it needs to be. You know, if the roof is leaking, let's fix it, 'cause we own it right now. First Bank ain't taking it back. So, if we gotta leak, let's fix the roof. You know, it's our, it's our building.
Commissioner Nunry?
My thoughts on this, before we vote on this amendment, I dare say most everybody here, we've had packets over a week. I dare say most everybody here knows how they feel, how they're gonna vote. We've talked about it for a year. Let's skip this amendment, let's fail it, and let's vote tonight and be done with this. It seems silly to me to just keep kicking the dead horse. That's my thoughts.
Any other thoughts, because we're fixing to vote?
What are we voting on?
You're voting on Mr. Murphy's.
Would you give a second?
Yes.
Terry King.
Okay, just thanks, John.
We vote on the amendment.
We're voting on the amendment. You wanna repeat that again? Please, Commissioner Murphy.
Madam Chair, it's not a amendment. This is a motion to move the resolution to refer to the property committee.
Okay. Does everyone understand?
It's already been through the property committee. I don't know what that means.
It's been through the property committee, but you want to, you wanna kinda explain that?
I would like to see the property committee designate how the space in that building will be used. That's what I'd like for the property committee to do. I think that it's their, it's their responsibility, it's their job. My motion is to re-refer it to the property committee so they can assign office space and decide how to...
Could that not be made to go from here if it passes to property to be decided?
If you, if you wanted to do that, you could amend the original resolution. You could do that, but...
Can't do that.
Commissioner Arnold?
So, what you're asking is for it to be amended, to say that the chamber could go downstairs portion of it, the mayor's office being upstairs for it. So, if my amendment moved them up, that we were voting on, that we amend the amendment and make it another amendment.
It's already been amended.
Yeah, just say this is where they're going.
You can vote, we can vote tonight, guys, to resolve the resolutions. We can vote to move or not to move. Any of these other things that we're talking about can be done afterwards. You don't have to make those decisions tonight. If we vote that the mayor's office is going to move over there and the chamber and Jennifer, then we can, it can come back to property, and they can make those decisions. You don't have to make those decisions tonight. The resolution is to yes or no, to move the mayor over there and chamber and Jennifer. Okay, everybody else has talked. I would like to recognize the chamber. I'm going to allow her to come forth, Ms. Lori McLaughlin, the chamber director.
Thank you so much, and I apologize if I spoke out of turn earlier. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you, and I appreciate the offer that's on the table. And just to give you some, everyone up to speed, you know, right before I was supposed to submit my twenty-five, twenty-six budget to the budget committee, I was hit by our lease or that they were doubling our lease at the chamber and asking for a seven-year lease agreement, doubling our rent and asking for a seven-year lease agreement. And because we are funded through city and county funding, I could not sign a seven-year lease agreement. So, they gave me six weeks to get out of the building. I called an emergency board meeting, Mayor Ward was there, and we talked over several scenarios and, you know, decided that was not in our best interest to sign a seven-year lease agreement. So, we started looking for buildings. We have to be out of our office by April the thirtieth, so I have signed a one-year lease agreement for the Ray Smith Rentals building right beside Laredo's Mexican Restaurant. It's a lot smaller office, but Jennifer will be able to come with us there. We wanted to make sure we had a place for her. But moving forward for the chamber, we are looking for a permanent location. Now, whether that, where that is, I don't know yet. Just before you make any decisions, I just don't, I want you to know that this would have to be something that would be discussed with my chamber board. It would have to be approved through the chamber board of directors, because, you know, we are a part of the county, but we do have our own board of directors, and that would have to be approved for them, through them. So, I can't sit here and say, you know, yes, we can definitely move in. That would have to be something that would be set up. I would like to see a plan. I don't even know what the First Bank building downstairs looks like. I don't know if it's big enough for our offices. How would that affect, you know, our employees? Is there enough room for us? Would I be able to have a boardroom? How would that affect our funding? Just different things like that. I appreciate it, and I would love to see that happen if everything falls in place, but I just want to make sure that you understand that that would have to be approved by my board of directors. That's not something I can just say, oh, yeah, we'll move, you know? But I do appreciate it and would definitely love to entertain it to our board.
Do you feel like it's a good location?
I feel like it's a great location. Yeah, I do. It's...
Good, thanks for that LED sign. Yeah, we'll just wait a minute, now, whatever. But do you think it's a good location that it would make to a home if you went to that building and been there for good?
The Benton County Chamber of Commerce is the welcome center for the community, so we need to be visible to the community. You know, several people have spoke to us about being down at the old electric system building. That's not a visible building for the chamber. Yes, the First Bank building is a visible building. Yes, I love the idea of the LED signage. I would love to promote more of Benton County that way. And I'm definitely not saying that we wouldn't entertain the move, 'cause we definitely would entertain it, but I just want you to know that that's something that would have to be approved by the board of directors. Yes.
Yes, right now, you ain't out in the cold, you know, right? You ain't out in the cold, you got twenty all day to a twelve-month lease.
That's correct. We're in a lot smaller location. I can't even have my board meetings there, 'cause there's not a room in there big enough to hold my twelve board members. But besides that, yes, we, we do have a location for a year that we have signed, signed a lease on. Yeah.
Anyone else? Anybody having questions for Lori?
But please understand that I do appreciate it, and I think it's a great idea. That's just something that I can't personally just make that decision on. It has to go through my board of directors.
Okay. Thank you, Lori. Okay, it's time to vote on Mr. Murphy's, what he wants to do with this resolution. Does everybody understand? He wants it to go back to property. Are y'all ready? If you're for that, vote. If you're not, vote.
Five yes, ten no, three yes.
Okay. We're back to the resolution as it was amended on the beginning, which was to add the chamber of commerce and the economic director in the same building. So, we're gonna vote on that? I think we've had enough discussion. So, if you're ready to vote, yeah.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Ten yes, five no, three yes.
Okay, motion has passed. We'll move on to resolution two. It is a resolution by Benton County Mark Board to approve policies and procedures for property tax incentive program relating to the negotiation and acceptance of payments in lieu of ad-humored tax with respect to certain facilities located in Benton County, and finding that such payments are deemed to be furtherance of the public purpose of the Industrial Development Board of the County of Benton as defined in Tennessee Code Annotated Section seven dash five, three dash three oh five. We have someone here that's with Jennifer tonight, Ms. Betsy Knotts, and they want to speak on this resolution and the second, the one after that also.
In the respective time, if you all would prefer, we will skip our presentation and let you ask questions. And if it comes to the point that you think you need to see the presentation, we will show it, but otherwise, we will just go with questions tonight. If you will recall, in February, those of you who serve on the budget committee, we made a presentation there, and it passed, to discuss payment in lieu of taxes and tax incremental financing. They are both incentive tools that economic developers use. I do not have anyone waiting on these policies right now for me. I want us to have them written and passed and available if anybody comes forward who needs them. Betsy wrote these for us. There is no additional cost to the county for what we're gonna do tonight. We've already taken care of that. They have to pass the industrial board, and then they have to pass the county in order for us to have these. When we asked her to write them, she wrote identical sets of documents for Benton and Decatur Counties. That's very important to us, that our neighbors, that we don't get played against our neighbors, that somebody comes and says, oh, well, if you don't do this, I'm gonna take this project to Decatur County. This way, we both know exactly what incentives are on the table from the two counties, and we did that on purpose, because that works best for us. These are two separate resolutions you're looking at tonight. I think pilot is first, and tenth is second, and my knowledge of this is now done, and this is Betsy Knotts.
And I'll just do a quick, a quick kind of overview, so you should have a copy of the pilot policies in your packet, as well as the tax... So you should have a copy of the Pilot Policies in your packet, as well as the Tax Increment Policies. And the major distinction between the Pilot Policies and the Tax Increment Incentive Policies is that the Pilot Policies, the county is actually delegating authority to the Industrial Development Board to carry out these projects and not have to come back to the county for approval. So it's more efficient, and that's commonly how it's done in the, in the state. There's an application attached to the Pilot Policies, so these kind of serve as an advertisement. They get posted on the website, and so private entities that are interested in investing in the area and bringing development here can see what your priorities are. They can fill out the information, so you make sure that they're in good standing. They pay an application fee, and then they're evaluated by the Industrial Development Board, and the tax abatement is negotiated and entered into. You'll see in the Pilot Policy, there's an evaluation matrix. So there's four main factors that are looked at. It's wages that the company brings, the location. We're specifically targeting, I believe it's Exit 126. We're specifically targeting that area, trying to bring some development to it, the investment, and then hiring folks from Benton or Decatur County. So those are the main four factors. And the Pilot can only go out 10 years, so you can only abate the taxes for, for up to 10 years. We're not doing the full 20 years.
Would that be on a sliding scale also?
Yes, correct. So, and then the Tax Increment Policy is basically just tracking the statute, because if you set up a tax increment area, it has to be approved by both the county and the city if it affects both tax rates. So just as a refresher, Tax Increment Financing is essentially, you designate an area that currently maybe pays $1,000 in tax revenue. Maybe it's just a dirt district. There's nothing there. It's a cow pasture. And you say, okay, this developer's gonna come in and put in a residential development or a mixed use, or maybe they'll just bring a hotel and a restaurant. And because the value goes up so high, you leverage that growth, and they can use a portion of the tax revenues to pay for infrastructure in that area. So you're paying for roads, stormwater, you know, public projects with incremental revenue. And I believe in that policy, we only went out 20 years max. But obviously, if a shorter period made more sense, then the IDP could do a shorter period. But those would all come back through the county and the city for approval. So that one is really more just tracking the statute and, and providing an application so that folks that are interested in these tools can apply. And again, it requires a fee and that kind of thing. So I'm happy to answer questions, at least for different areas in the, in the state. You know, obviously, some more rural areas. We've also done them for, you know, urban areas like Chattanooga. So policies are really important to have in place so that you treat the private entities that are interested in these tools consistently, and you have an objective way to evaluate what they're offering.
Because of the stress county, but our program, why would you resist it?
It's currently not in the policy, but I do think when you're a distressed county, you're allowed to use tax increment financing for residential. However, the legislature just passed a law that opened tax increment financing up. I think it'll go into effect in a couple weeks for residential. So you could do pure residential development and use tax increment financing to pay for the infrastructure in that development. Because the idea being that in a distressed county, you need housing.
Anyone have any questions? Or Ms. Knotts?
And I'm available via email as well, if you have any follow-up questions, because these aren't like the most clear, you know, it's kind of complicated, and obviously, it's 8:20 on a Monday night, so I don't want to hammer you with a present, presentation, so, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Knotts. Okay, Resolution Number Two. Ready to vote? Your board is up for voting. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Three is sort of the same type of resolution. It's a resolution by County Mayor Mark Board to approve policies and procedures relating to the implementation of tax increment incentive transactions that may be undertaken by the Industrial Development Board of the County. Any questions? There are none, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes.
Thank you all, and my apologies to Scott Hill for having me on the day to give him a slide presentation. We'll catch up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Resolution Four is a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Board to express support for Ford Motor Company's Blue Oak City project and recognize its significant economic impact of Tennessee. Motion, Commissioner Melton, and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions? Okay, there are none, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Five is a resolution by Mayor Mark Board to appoint Sam Jones to the Benton County Solid Waste Board for four years. A motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Price. Any questions?
Is Sam here?
Sam is not here. His son is going through some cancer, and he wasn't able to be here. His apologies, but he would still be a great asset to this Solid Waste Board.
Any others? There are none, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Six is a resolution by Mayor Mark Board to appoint Brittany Fuller to the Benton County Animal Shelter Board for a four-year term. A motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Melton. Any questions?
Is she here?
Mm-hmm.
I'd just like to put a name on that.
Anyone else? There are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Seven is a resolution by Mayor Mark Board to appoint Candy Eaton to the Benton County Animal Shelter Board for a four-year term. Have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Murphy. Any questions? Candy is here, sitting on the front row. Okay, there are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Eight is a resolution to appoint John Melton to the Benton County Agriculture Extension Board to serve the remainder of a term ending January 2, 2026. Motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? Okay, there are none, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Number Nine is a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount of $9,125 received from Tennessee Risk Management to appropriate line item. A motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Melton. Any questions? Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Ten is a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to seek commission approval for a service agreement with Gibson Connect for Internet Services. Commissioner Melton, I have a motion by him and a second by Commissioner Arnold. Okay, there are none, so please vote. Mr. Florence was out of town, and I apologize. He said he wouldn't be here tonight. That's why, because he's out of town. But he did explain this the other night to the Budget Committee. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Eleven is a resolution by Mark Florence to appropriate in budget funds in the amount of $200,000 within the school budget. A motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions? Okay, there are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Twelve is a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to appropriate in budget funds in the amount of $500,000 within the school budget. A motion by Commissioner Douglas and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? There are none, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Thirteen is a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount of $11,590.67 received from a school nutrition state match to appropriate line items for expenditure within the school budget. A motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Arnold. Any questions? Are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Fourteen is a resolution by Mayor Mark Board to appropriate in budget funds in the amount of $400 to the Circuit Clerk's budget to cover a projected shortfall in an unemployment compensation. A motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions? We have none, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Fifteen is a resolution by Mayor Mark Board to appropriate in budget funds in the amount of $7,500 to cover an expenditure obligation to community development partners. A motion by Commissioner Murphy and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions?
Question.
There are recognized questions, huh?
What is that, Mayor? Community development partner?
Uh, Maddie Cushman, our grant writer. This is closing out the CD BG grant that was for the EMA building that expired. We just had to pay her to finish to close that out, and then we'll apply for a new one.
Any others?
And I know you're thinking, we just did this last month. You may get one more round of bills before it's completely closed, but it, it's what we're having to, it's coming out of the grant, so.
Any other questions? I see none, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Sixteen is a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to budget funds in the amount of $2,400 received from the sex offender registration fee to appropriate line item for expenditure. I have a motion to bring it to the floor by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Hall.
You should have Member, Member Number One for Resolution Sixteen, changing the line item, the motor charges to revenue connected. Correct line item.
Commissioner Melton, are you making that in the form of a motion to amendment? I need a second for the amendment. We have one by Commissioner Nundry. Any questions about the amendment? Commissioner Bane?
I seconded it. Okay.
Okay. For the amendment. Okay. Okay, any questions about this amendment? Okay, there are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? 15 yes. Now we'll vote on the resolution as we just amended it. Okay. Everyone please vote on Resolution Sixteen as it was amended. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Seventeen is a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to declare multiple vehicles in possession of the sheriff's department as surplus property for the purpose of auctioning them off. A motion. We have one by Commissioner Bane and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions for the sheriff? Okay, if there are no other questions, everyone please vote. You want to change your vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Eighteen is a resolution by Mayor Mark Board to seek permission and authority to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Second Harvest Food Bank of Middleton, Tennessee for disaster relief. A motion by Commissioner Holland and a second by Commissioner King. Any questions? Okay, there's none, everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Nineteen is a resolution by Mayor Ward to appropriate in budget funds in the amount of $75,378 to pay bills related to upgrades at the Benton County Health Department. A motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions for the mayor? Okay, there are none, so-
This is all reimbursable. It's just we have to pay it upfront. It's coming to a completion, so it won't be very long.
Okay, everyone please vote. Resolution Twenty is a resolution by Sheriff Christopher to appropriate in budget funds in the amount of $6,000 to an appropriate expense account to cover the purchase of custodial Motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions? Okay, there are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Twenty-One is a resolution by Mayor Ward to appropriate in budget funds in the amount of $729.13 to General Sessions Judge's budget to cover a projected shortfall in the deputy's line item. A motion by Commissioner Burke and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? Okay, there are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 15 yes. Resolution Twenty-Two is a resolution by Mayor Ward to budget funds in the amount of $2,000 to the Benton County Archives for the purchase of- to the Benton County Archives for the purchase of archival boxes. Motion by Burke and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions? Okay, there are none, please vote.
Anyone want to change your vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Resolution twenty-three is a resolution by Mayor Ward to budget funds in the amount of $2,000 to the Benton County. I'm sorry, I just read that one. Resolution twenty-three is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to seek permission and authority to enter into an agreement and contract with Covia Corporation concerning a roadway. We have a motion by Commissioner Hall and a second by Commissioner Price. Any questions about this? Okay, I see none, so everyone please vote.
Anyone want to change your vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Resolution twenty-four is a resolution by Mayor Ward to appropriate in budget funds in the amount of $150,000 for funding a 100% reimbursable grant for Benton County Ag Extension. Have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Murphy. Any questions about the grant? Okay, there are none, so everyone please vote.
Anyone want to change your vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Resolution twenty-five is a resolution by Mayor Ward to budget funds in the amount of $4,526.81 to help fund computers for the library's use. Have a motion by Commissioner Bane and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions? Pardon me? Okay.
And in the appropriation of the money, the commitment that show the language to be appropriated.
He's talking about in the first line. It needs to say appropriate.
Do you all have a copy of that amendment? So you understand? I guess so. So we need to vote on this amendment. If you're for the amendment, please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Okay, now we'll vote on Resolution twenty-five as it was just amended.
May I ask how old the computers are that do the plug-in library?
She, yeah, we have the.
Okay. Let me put my eyes on her. One of them is a 2019. Five of them are 2020 and four 2021. All of them are out of warranty. All of our support for our computers are provided by our state regional offices. Once they go out of warranty, they no longer support our computers. Therefore, we have to have a written technology plan with the state that's part of our state standards. And the written technology plan says that once that computer goes out of warranty, you replace the outdated computers. And this was with the matching grant. And the money that you are appropriating up was originally, we were, if you look at the original budget of the library, it was $126,000. Part of that $20,000 of it was put into a separate account in 171. That's where it's going.
So these will be county computers?
Yes.
On that account?
Yep.
Will they be tagged with that?
Yep. They will be in our inventory.
I would like to say one thing about that. We put half of it in 171, $5,000. The other half is in your budget.
Yes, it is.
I would like to ask you not to spend that in the next two months since we're putting this money in here into 171 to make the payment.
Not spend, no, the $5,000, $10,000 is what the entire bill is that you've got.
But in budget last year, we put $5,000 in your budget and $5,000 in 171. I can't write a check out of two different accounts to pay for a payment according to the comptroller. So I brought this resolution up to put that money in 171 to cover that, but that will still be in your budget, the other $5,000, so.
Oh, so this is going to go, okay. Yeah, well, I'm not going to spend that because I'm assuming that's spent.
Right. I just wanted to.
For me, that is now spent money. My debt process.
I just wanted you to make a mental note of that, so we wouldn't.
We can do that.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
The old computers, what do you own them? You give them back to the regional or?
Yes, we give them back to the region and the state. And what they do with those are they take them to like the one-room libraries that literally don't get states for, that they can't, you know.
How many more regions do you have?
How many, would you like to, how many total computers?
I don't know. How many county owns, how many region?
There's really not a lot. There's, right now, the ones that are going to come off, we're going to, because the region doesn't need them right now. The region and the state don't. They will become surplus for y'all. There'll be seven, there'll be a total of 10 little surplus.
Always confused, what they own, what we own.
I know, I know, it's very confusing. But the surplus of this is going to just go to y'all because there are no other libraries, the one-room libraries. They've got all covered this year. So they will not take those and they've let us surplus them out. Oh, total, we have 42 computers in that library. Because we have laptops, everything else.
Okay, any other questions? There are none, so everyone please vote. This is on the amendment.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Now let's vote on the resolution as we just amended.
Yeah, that was it.
Oh, okay. So this is the, this is the resolution. Resolution 26 is a resolution by Mayor Ward to appropriate budget funds in the amount of $13,500 to pay for the required replacement of disconnects and weatherheads in the new senior center building. Motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Bane. Any questions for the mayor?
Mayor, on this, do we have this in writing from the district inspector?
Uh, referred to Charlie. If you don't mind coming up.
Say again?
It's just verbal. You kind of passed the file on, right? That'll be a change. Okay, I can get it in writing.
I'd just like to request, well, we've had more money than something already doing than we have something in writing saying. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so everyone please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion passes fifteen yes.
Commissioner, I mean, Resolution 27 is a resolution by Sheriff Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of $550 from the general fund on assigned fund balance to appropriate expense account to cover the purchase of needed backup and assist software. Commissioner Price liked the motion and Commissioner Hall seconded it. Any questions? Yes.
Did we not figure out that that needs to be pulled? This resolution needs to be pulled because we found that we're following the account that felt our misperception.
So is that okay with you, Sheriff, to pull this? Resolution 28 is a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate in budget funds in the amount of $6,485.25 to fund the renewal of licenses for the AED machines. Have a motion by Commissioner Bane and a second by Commissioner Hall. Okay. Since there are no questions, everyone please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Resolution 29 is a resolution by Sheriff Christopher to appropriate in budget funds in the amount of $240. $240 fund a recommended change in antivirus software.
Madam Chair, that one also needs to be pulled. We found problems with that.
Resolution 30, our last resolution. It's a resolution by Mayor Ward to appropriate in budget funds in the amount of $17,500 to pay for the ceiling, stropping, and repair of the new center parking lot. We have a motion by Terry King, Commissioner King, and a second by Commissioner Murphy. Any questions about this? Anyone? I think there are none, so please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries fifteen yes.
Number 38 on your agenda is the appointing of notaries. We have nine notaries this month. Amy Hawkman, Stephanie Harcelo, Justin Thornton, Elizabeth Lakefield, Marty Roberts, Donna Neskes, Andrew P. Jones, Sandra Farmer, and Sandra Edwards. Need a motion. We have one by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Hall to approve these people as notaries. You know, all in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Down to number 39, is any other business? Do we have any other business? Sheriff?
Yes, ma'am. I was going to add one word. I will be voting. I mean, I will be voting. Thank you. That's good. You're forward to a lot now.
Okay.
I think we have like $67,000 in my review. That's all. I got pretty much, it wasn't here too much. It was pretty good.
What program are you referring to? Is it the one with the county councilman? I was under the impression that y'all haven't spent near as much as we thought you would.
They contacted, the lady that's here for us is, she contacted today and said she might be ready to do the funds. They thought we got enough.
We've been paying what they bill, but they've only been paying, billing that $2,000 and $3,000 a month. They haven't even spent anywhere close to what they're.
I have a colleague, correct? She called yesterday back. That's all she told me is that she was lost.
Who was it on budget that we looked that up just a couple nights ago? On budgets? It was you, you looked it up. It wasn't anywhere close to being out of funds because we weren't even spending half of what we had appropriated.
We're trying to figure out why we weren't spending. How much time did we appropriate on that?
There was 80,000 to cover.
No, there was only about 70 to a 30. 73. For the, for the period program.
I think it was 73, but we actually didn't. We sent 73 from the, they, well, they used, you only actually got 73.
But that wasn't for this year. We had already received what we funded it with. That's for next year.
How much did you do?
I don't know much. I'm not sure.
I think this month was the most they've ever billed. It was only $4,000. It was between $2,000 and $3,000 every other month. So I don't understand that. If you'll have her call me, I can give her a printout of what's left.
I'll have her. Her manager will contact you. I'll ask her number on it.
Because it's not on our part. I'll be glad to get with them if you'll have them. I know. Me too. Thank you.
Anything else tonight? I'll give everybody an update on Commissioner Gary Furr. He is home. He had been in Vanderbilt Hospital, but he's home. He's in a rehabilitation center. He's doing well. He says he hopes he will be back at the meeting next month. That's update. If you want to call him and talk to him or visit him, he's at the place here in Camden, the Camden Rehabilitation Center. Or if you want to go by and see him, he said he could have visitors. But hopefully he'll be back next month. Anything else? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn? Motion, Joe Hittis? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose?